All right. Tonight, we have a very special guest with us. Would you like to introduce yourself? Well, this is going to be our mayor for the day. This is Brylee Zeller, and I'm going to let her open the meeting for us and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you want to go ahead?
Please stand. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you know, maybe.
Thank you, Brylee. So she's going to be up here through our public comment time, and I'm going to go ahead and start the meeting with a roll call, please.
Mayor Tim.
Here.
Mayor for the day, Zeller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lind.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Chat.
Here.
Councilmember Wimp.
Here.
Okay, great. And I know we had a holiday week, so this is probably going to be light, but we'll go ahead and start with committee reports, and I'll start on my left.
I surprisingly have no actual committee reports, but I will have a public comment.
All right, great.
I have nothing for mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
I did have a Metro Board of Directors meeting, and one of the things that was really of interest is a legislative and a state update with some information on funding and metro funding that was still approved on the state budget and working as far as addressing, basically, their fiscal cliff and planning for the future on how to address that. And that's the only actual committee report I have too.
Okay, great. Let's remember Wimp.
I don't have anything for this following week. We have one tomorrow, so I'll have some for next meeting.
Okay.
My first regional wastewater.
We're looking forward to it. Nothing more exciting than wastewater. Yeah, my, I don't have a committee report, but I'll just add that I was, I was able to attend the scout meeting where Brylee has been dreaming about being mayor for a day. So she's a member of our local scout troop, and we invited her in tonight, so we're really excited to have her up here joining us this evening. Now I'll kick it over to the city manager for her report.
Good evening, Mayor Tim, members of the council and community. I just have a few short reports as well for you this week. First, our street sweeping enforcement program started this week. This was some new, no parking areas around the technology circle in El Pueblo area because we'd noticed a lot of debris was piling up there that we weren't able to get clean, which was causing some environmental issues to Carbonar Creek. And so that program started this week. We started sweeping there and got a lot of debris out of the gutter of the roadway. So that was really positive. Also, tomorrow, Public Works will be meeting with Anderson Pacific regarding a mobilization meeting to start the repair work from the mudslide that we experienced recently, and we are anticipating that they will need to close one lane of the road during construction. So people should be ready for traffic control and to be patient as we manage through that construction project in the coming weeks. Also, last week, the city launched our Shop Local Win Local holiday campaign to encourage people to shop local this holiday season. We tried to make the program as simple as possible, where basically anyone who spends $10 at a local Scotts Valley business during the month of December can turn in their receipts or send us a copy and be entered to win prizes from local businesses. So we're excited to be partnering with the Chamber of Commerce on this fun campaign and our local businesses and encourage everyone to shop local this holiday season to support our local businesses. Also, our, speaking of the holidays, our Recreation Department will be hosting their annual crafts and cocoa event on December 12th. This is a fun family event of cookie decorating, and I'm sure lots of cookie eating. So encourage folks to attend that event. Also, tomorrow night, we will have a special city, a special planning commission meeting to review the town center specific plan and EIR. That meeting is at 7:30 tomorrow evening here in the council chambers. And then just one last project update. Our maintenance team completed the drainage below the retaining wall between Siltman and the Glenwood Preserve. Remember, last year, the land trust rebuilt that retaining wall, and then the city followed that up with redoing the drainage below the retaining wall. And so that project was just completed last week. And those are all my updates for you this evening.
Great, thank you. Now's our opportunity for public comment time, and any member of the public can speak on any item not on our agenda, and you have up to three minutes to speak. And I'm actually going to start it off with our mayor for the day, who has a public comment.
There are homeless people in Santa Cruz. They should all be under roofs. Some can't even afford an apartment or a hotel. They should be able to go to apartments and hotels for free. I also think that there should be more homes for the homeless people. Maybe there could be a fundraiser to build a big building that homeless people can live in. They should, there should be enough rooms for each family. If the person does not have family, they should share a room with one other person. Also, all the food and water should be free. Housing is expensive, and it should be more affordable. For example, housing can cost up to a billion dollars or a million dollars. Another example is some people don't have jobs. Also, some people have jobs, but houses are really expensive. That is why the homeless people should live under a roof. Thank you, City Council, and I hope for God.
All right, thank you, Brylee. Let her join her family, and then I'll look for other members of the public that are here to speak on items not on the agenda. Yeah, please step up to state your name, and we'd love to hear from you.
Hello, my name is John Lewis. I am a member of the Yes in My Backyard Santa Cruz Organization. I believe in a Santa Cruz county for all. In the proposal, proposal that is being reviewed tomorrow night by the Planning Commission, it falls short by 300 units and one whole parcel from the plan that was put into the housing element. If we do not keep up with what we do, with what we committed for the housing element, we can lose all local control. We can lose a lot of money to people suing us for not keeping up with our commitments, and we will not produce the homes that we have guaranteed to homeless people, to low-income people, to families who are trying to survive in Scotts Valley and surrounding regions. The city of Scotts Valley doesn't really do a great job for our poor people. We don't really do a great job for people who need housing. We really don't do a great job for people who are waiting for housing. The thousands of people in Santa Cruz who are waiting with coupons for low-income housing are depending on the five of you to do the thing you committed to do or the city council members before you committed to do. And if you don't, it opens the city up for legal liability, and we don't have a whole lot of money, from what I understand. So paying lawyers to defend us from court cases for not staying in line with our housing element is playing with fire. The state has enough money to bankrupt the city, and they would love to make an example out of a city who is not following through with their housing elements. I know that I don't want to deal with the wrath of the state of California, and I know that we want to maintain local control so we can keep some sort of identity for what Scotts Valley is compared to all of the unincorporated areas around Scotts Valley. And I think it's repugnant that we are moving forward with a plan that might not meet our commitments. I also know that we have lobbied people funding bonds and other grants for low-income housing in an attempt to try and maintain a building in our community that hasn't been used to its capacity for decades, from what I understand. And that hurts, knowing that we took time out to drive to Sacramento to lobby someone who's giving our city money to build low-income housing. We asked them to take it back, so that plan would fail. That sucks. I think we can do better. I know we can do better. I think we can actually provide for people who need help without putting our city at risk of dissolution. We have economic problems, we have traffic problems. We need people to work jobs. We need people locally who will be able to walk to work and put in their hours without having to clog traffic. The average person in Scotts Valley, the average household in Scotts Valley earns $140,000 a year. We are a community of means. I have proudly heard people say that our schools are the bottom seventh percentile in funding because of how much money everyone in Scotts Valley makes. Bond Measure O, which was our city funding, our, our community funding for the schools, passed with less than 20 votes. So we are getting less than 93% of all other schools per, per student in Scotts Valley. And we have the opportunity to bring people into our community who need opportunity, who need access to great education, who need access to teachers who love being here, who take a low paycheck to teach our students because they love our community, they love us. And if we build low-income housing, we might be able to get out of the classification as a city of means, which means we could actually get funding for our schools. You make the decision on how much funding our schools get based on the buildings and property taxes our state is able to take in, and with how much income or housing we make for specific income ranges or likely to attract specific income ranges. The problem with our schools not getting funding is a problem we have levers to control. They are very real. You hold them. I would love it if you would make some positive movements. Love it. I would also love it if we held true to our commitments and didn't open ourselves up to lawsuits. I would love it if we still had local control of permitting, because we might not if we actually use the proposal as it sits. So thank you very much for your time. I hope we can do the right thing.
Thank you.
My name is Matthew Hakimi, and some of you know why I'm here. You know, the city illegally has constructed the pickleball, converted the tennis court to pickleball in the Sky Park illegally. And I expect the city manager have some plan to remove that pickleball. And then, you know, all these people here tonight, there is no toilet for us to go toilet, but you put the open sewage toilet near my house, and nobody responds to remove that toilet. And then the city has sprayed roundup herbicide for a long time in the Scotts Valley, and four of my neighbors have died. Four of my neighbors, and I want to ask the city to, for, to come with the disclosure and notify all the Sky Park residents about how much herbicide roundup you guys sprayed in the city. And then another item I have is the golf course. The Sacramento two-state bill was turned down for turning the golf course, municipal golf course into housing. It was a two, two separate state bill, and I hope that you guys don't go against the Sacramento wishes and honor what Sacramento decided. And then another thing is that the last time I was here, the city manager said there is a toxic soldier report from the land between the skateboard and the library. And then I see a lot of piles of dump soil on the ground that's supposed to be tested, and it's like a cover-up. You know, you can't cover up the soil that you have to test. So these are all serious things that, all these issues that I raised, you know? You, you guys are responsible for the safety, health, and well-being of the community. You cannot spray herbicides and not inform the public that the, four of my neighbors died of incurable cancer, incurable, 40, 40 years old to 60. The last one died was this city council member, Paul Mario Gonda. He became a judge later. He was three doors from me. Two, two other people next door to him, they also died of cancer because of all these herbicides the city sprayed there. So all these toxic stuff, I, thank you.
Good evening, Council, Don Dietrich, Lockwood Lane resident, and I'm just here checking in with you. I, I sent a letter to the Planning Department last year about the golf course project, and I'm not opposed to building things there, especially housing. What I am concerned about is ingress and egress off of Lockwood Lane into that, that proposal there. And, and the reason I have concern about that is, of course, I walk every day up and down Lockwood Lane, and traffic in the mornings, especially in the evenings, is bad, and people drive really fast. And Chief, I'd like to thank whoever it was that was out there doing radar the other day, but there's just not enough traffic control on that road. I'd say the average speed's 45 to 48 miles an hour. It's posted 30. So what I, what my concern was that I voiced with the Planning Department was to not allow ingress and egress onto Lockwood Lane, but to funnel it out onto Mount Herman, where you're between two traffic-controlled intersections, which would be much safer for everybody involved, including people that are walking and, and people that are trying to get in and out of there. Where the driveway was proposed, where I saw it marked, which is what sparked this, is kind of in the S-curves in there, right around Twin Pines Road. And that's where people start really picking up speed because it's downhill. And, I mean, I cross that crosswalk twice a day, probably, down, down the road from there, and it's kind of scary. You know, of course, I'm old, you know, it takes me a while to get across the road, but it's, that's my concern. And so I don't want to lose, lose sight of that. I, I did get a, a acknowledgement letter back from the Planning Department that they had my concerns, and they were looking at them. It's been about a year, I haven't heard anything. But I just wanted to address you with those same concerns that, you know, housing's needed. Housing's a great thing for there. You know, entrances and exits out on the Lockwood Lane though are a concern. I'd hate to see you put a traffic light there, but you'll have to put some sort of traffic control if you, if they're going to put it where they want it, because people just go whipping through there. And the sad part about it is, it's not normally the people that live in the neighborhoods, the Whispering Pine neighborhoods, it's people coming from the San Renzo Valley, cutting across to get over into the city. I mean, I see Davy Tree trucks pulling chippers, and they're doing about 45 miles an hour down the hill, so I'll keep an eye on that, and if, if you need more people to come raw, raw for it, let me know. I'll gather a crowd and bring them down here for you.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. All right, do we have any other, yeah, do we have any other speakers tonight? Anyone online? Comments from council?
Yeah, I just wanted to share one thing here. Councilmember Wimp and I, we attended the Clubs Giving Event at our Scotts Valley Boys and Girls Club back on November 21st. We got the opportunity to meet with staff and interact with some of the kids, learn about the program events, offerings for communities, meals, homework, power hour, recreation, and all the things that they provide there for our kids. And additionally, what was really cool is we got to see the result of the community grants that we gave them and what they were able to build there, the, the meeting space and the gathering space that they were able to create, thanks to the grant that we provided them, and we got to see what a benefit that was for the facility and for the kids in our community. And it, it was just, it was a great time, glad that we had the opportunity to do that, and we just wanted to report out on, on, on the good things that are happening there in terms of what they're doing for our community, what they're doing for our kids, and what our contributions to them mean in terms of the sustainability of that program.
That's great, and I understand the federal grant as well that's coming through?
That's, yeah, it's, it's been earmarked for them, and that will go towards the construction of the new facility that they have planned. It won't cover it, but it will be a good launching point for them. So excited for that as well, and thankful to Congressman Neta for that.
Other comments, yes?
And I wanted to commend the Scotts Valley POA for their toy drive on Black Friday, and it was great to see so many of the community stepping forward, and Councilmember Wimp and I were there and able to thank the officers, but wanted to let the community know that our, our officers were out there for, in very cold weather for several hours, including Chief Rutherford. And those toys will be brought to the Tree Lighting Festival on Saturday, this Saturday, from 5:00 to 7:30. The POA will have a booth there to, to collect more toys, and I know Councilmember Wimp is helping with that event and part of the exchange club presenting the event, and hope everyone will join us for Santa arriving cider, hot cocoa, kids dancing and singing, seeing our youth in there, and even our, our canine will be there greeting people. So come join us on Saturday at the community center from 5:00 to 7:30.
Great, looking forward to that event, and any other comments?
Yeah, just back along with that, for the Light Up the Night event this weekend. You didn't miss out to bring some toys to the toy drive. Donna said the POA will be there again to receive your donations, and then it's a great community event. There's lots of organizations that will put on dancing, singing, you name it, entertainment. It's really fun to see all the kids out there and families. Yeah, and then the Boys and Girls Club, it's exciting to hear about their plans, you know, expanded services and, and where not just the, the city, but the community support. And it was really touching hearing some of the personal testimonies, you know, we met with some of the kids, you know, they shared some of their stories and the impact the club has made, and then this mom in particular, a widow, has kids, and just what an impact the program has had on, on supporting her as a single mom now, so.
And adding that, I forgot to mention non-perishable food and unwrapped toys, and all of it will benefit Valley Churches United.
Excellent, right. Do we have any other folks to speak this evening? A little comment? That'll go ahead and close with a comment, and next I'm looking at our consent agenda. I do understand we have one alteration staff?
Yes, Mayor Tim, staff requests that we remove the approval of the City Council's special meeting minutes from November 19th, 2025. We would like to add more detail before you approve those minutes, so we'll just bring them back at your next council meeting. So with, with the removal of that one item, the rest of the consent agenda is ready.
Okay, so it's just going to be the first portion of item one. We'll still keep the regular meeting, it's 11:19.
That's correct.
On, and just remove the special meeting. So we're still approving items one through five, just only part of item one. Do we have any other items from council? Any from the public? Comments from the public?
Move approval?
Motion?
Yep, I'll second that.
Your motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed? The abstaining? Okay, motion passes unanimously. We're not quite to the time where we can start our public hearing, so I'm going to move on to, do we have any alterations to our regular agenda?
There are no alterations from staff.
Any from council? Any from public?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Right, that motion passes unanimously, so we'll move on to the first item on our regular agenda.
Just in case people don't know, there is a bathroom right out that door and to the right. It sounds like there is one right next, right next to us.
Yes, yes, there's.
Yes, yep. So just to be sure that you do know that's available.
Welcome. Thank you for pointing that out. Also, so let's start with our first item here, that is approval of a resolution of intentioned, permanent, enhanced infrastructure financing district, and I'll kick that over to staff.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Tim. We have Joe Diegues from Osmont Companies here. He's our consultant on this project, and it's great to have Joe in person for this evening's meeting. So Joe's going to share his screen and walk us through a presentation on this item. This will be the, I think, third time that we have discussed this with the city council. Most recently, in June, we had a presentation kind of laying out our options, and from there, the council directed staff to continue refining the model as well as engage in dialogue with both the Scotts Valley Fire District as well as the County of Santa Cruz regarding their interest in participation in the EIFD with the city. And so we have done that outreach. We have the fire chief here in the audience, and the, the fire department or the fire district has seen a couple of presentations on this as well. We've also met with county staff and our fifth district supervisor on this issue. So looking forward to this next step in the process, and with that, I'll turn it over to Joe.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Tim, members of the city council. Good to be with you in person today. All right, as the city manager laid out, this is the continuation of a discussion. This is a potential tool in your toolkit for, for infrastructure, funding and financing. The way these tools work, we call them value capture tools. They're set up to take advantage of future assessed property value that comes when the private sector invests in new ground-up development, rehab of underutilized property, and it allows you to capture that future value, to invest those dollars into public infrastructure, community amenities, other things that actually further incentivize that private sector investment. The specific type of value capture tool we are talking about is this Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, say, EIFD. And consistent with some of the things that we discussed back on, I think it was June 18, order of magnitude dollars we're talking about here, 40 to 50 million dollars in present value funding capacity. It relies on several assumptions, which I will walk through in detail today, and you have the ability as a city to do it alone if you wanted to. You just use your piece of the property tax pie to do those sorts of investments, but we always say a city gets the most bang for your buck if you are able to get a partnership with another tax entity, fire district, county, or both. And all of that is aside from the fact that you're also, in doing this, elevating your ability to attract yet other public money. ability to attract yet other public money. There are grant programs, I'll probably name a few in this presentation where you're actually getting more points on the scoring rubric on these grant applications if you have explicitly these types of tools in your community. A lot of the time spent since June was what we would call the, the return on investment analysis. What's in it for you, just dollars and cents, general fund, in terms of other things like housing and jobs, but we spend a lot of time on just dollars and cents, general fund. Could you even afford to do this? What you are essentially doing is encumbering a piece of future property tax, not of today's dollars, but you are encumbering a piece of future property. And this analysis was to say, you know, can you afford to do that? What is your return for doing that? Are you actually catalyzing a level of growth and investment that wouldn't otherwise happen? And does that bring with it a positive net impact to your general funds? So new revenues are great, there are also new expenditures, so what is that net net? And that analysis was done not only for the city, but also for your potential partners in the fire district and the county. And so the punchline of all that analysis is because you have control as a city of how much of that future growth you redirect and you encumber, the analysis identified really you can't do more than 50%. You couldn't, even if you wanted to, tie up more than 50% of your share. Otherwise, there's not really that positive ROI for you. We would say, why do it if you're not better off for doing it? So there's a limit for the city based on your adopted budget, your revenue structure, where if you start allocating way more than that, you're actually either neutral or potentially even negative because you need enough property tax just to keep your lights on, serve your, your day-to-day municipal services. For the county as a potential partner to the city, it's a lower percentage that they can allocate from their share. And it wasn't surprising to us at Cosmon because within cities, new development brings you a variety of different revenues, property tax, yes, but also a sales tax, potential sale tax, other forms of revenues. But for a county, it's just property tax. And the punchline is for, for them, they can't afford to do more than 25% of their share to be your partner. The same type of analysis was applied to the fire district and their, their sort of benchmark, their inflection point is about 30% of their share. They do it at all. Their analysis is they couldn't really afford to allocate more than 30% of their share of the property tax pie. The library district is actually another entity that receives a piece of property tax within the city and they could actually allocate as much as all of their share. That kind of adds to the pie. And we're talking about all these other entities, all these other entities, because you as a city, you actually don't receive a, a large part of the property tax. We often find that's news to members of the public. Many times we hear people think, because you own property in the city, you pay your property tax, the city gets all of it. You know that's not true. Not, not everyone knows that. Your piece is quite small, so it's really incumbent on lower property tax cities as yourselves, I to achieve those partnerships, the other taxing entity. So I'll go into more detail on all of that, make sure all assumptions are clear and would obviously welcome your questions on all of it. If the conversation continues beyond today, this, this action that's on the agenda for your consideration, it's a non-binding action. It's called a resolution of intention, but it's quite important in its symbolism. It really gets the process moving toward implementation and it, it signals certainly to your potential partners in the fire district and the county that you are more certain that you want to continue down this path, though you are not bound to so. This, this tool again is a form of what is known as tax increment financing. Always have to make it very clear, certainly for members of the public, it's not a new tax. Anything that we're talking about today is not a new tax. It is designating a specific boundary within the city and saying as, as value grows over time, city and other taxing entities will receive more property tax just as value goes up. And what this tool allows you to do is just set aside a piece, almost like a retirement account, set aside a piece of that future property tax revenue into a separate fund apart from the general fund, with these dollars restricted for infrastructure. And again, a little bit like a retirement account, you get the most bang for your buck if you've got someone like an employer matching your allocation. And in this analogy, fire district or county, those are your potential employer matches and earning more dollars for investment into projects, the city. And it's got a fixed time horizon. The way these go, you have to identify a specific number of years and then once that time is up, things sort of go back to normal. All the property tax just gets distributed like it would have otherwise. City gets its share, county gets its share, fire district gets its share. And if those other entities choose not to participate, we're, we're not messing with their money. We're not changing anything, not the way we receive it. Folks have to voluntarily opt in to be your partner. Very important. Our specific rules for how these tools, these E I F Ds work, they are able to be long-term in their duration. The law allows them to be up to 45 years in duration. You can choose to make it shorter if you want to. Governance is key. There's a new entity that actually gets set up to govern these, these so-called public financing authorities. And if you are successful in getting a partner, fire district or county, they also get a seat at that governing public financing authority board. So that's, that's key. It's sort of, you're allocating money, you get a seat at the table, govern how those dollars get spent. That authority is in charge of implementing a plan. It's like a business plan, called the infrastructure financing plan, and that lays out all the detail. What are you going to pay for? How many dollars? What's the time horizon? What's each agency's respective fiscal impact? And there's a system of checks and balances in place where it's not like anyone's sort of handing over the keys entirely to this new public financing authority, but the city council would have, the full city council would have to independently approve that plan. And the other partnering agencies like the fire district or the county, their respective legislative bodies would also have to approve that plan. And then only then, the public financing authority then move forward and implement that plan, actually pay for those projects. There are a series of public meetings and hearings prescribed by the law. They have mandatory spacing in between them, at least 30 days, have mandatory notices via mail, a newspaper, via website. And very importantly, there's no vote to form these because we're not changing anybody's taxes, but what there is at the last public hearing is a protest opportunity, meaning any landowners or residents within that financing district boundary, they have the opportunity to say, we don't like it. We don't like any part of it, the financing plan, the concept, the way the process was conducted, really any of it. And it's sort of the last step in the checks and balances, the approval process for these There's a, a long list in the law. It's like bullet points at this point. It almost gets added to every legislative session, what you can pay for and it starts with the words including, but not limited to. Has these as examples, water, sewer, roadway improvements, parks, affordable housings on the list, libraries, broadband infrastructure. But it's a pretty inclusive list, tend to be flexible. Really, it's a, the city that can, within this list prioritize what it wants to fund. I'll go into a bit more detail on that. Then the last point is another general point before talking more specifically about Scotts Valley, is why we're seeing cities and counties go down this path. The first one, I think I've already hinted at it multiple times, it's this return on investment concept. And we're not seeing cities and counties go down this path if the general fund is not better off for doing it versus not doing it. But it is about some of these other measures of return on investment, job creation, housing production, solving for infrastructure that needs to get solved for. That second one I also mentioned already, that ability to attract yet other money, be more competitive with things like state grants. This third one is, is quite important. It's the fact that the private sector, especially those development partners that are used to working with the public agency, this is a very strong signal to them that you are going to prioritize the infrastructure that will be key, it will be critical for their projects to be successful. Things like utility capacity, roadway access, circulation, even lighting, signalization, all, all those sorts of things, especially in the town center. And so just as a status update, this is, I know this has changed even since we last met in June. Up to 36 of these formed across the state, some cities going alone, some counties actually going alone in unincorporated jurisdiction. Up to 10 partnerships between multiple agencies, mostly cities and counties, cities and fire districts, multiple cities in a county. So all sorts of variations. We've, our, our firm has worked on about 23 of those 36. This is just some more of the examples on the city-county partnerships, we've spent too much time, but that's in the presentation for reference. So in trying to define the boundary within Scotts Valley, do one of these, if you did it at all, it's a little bit of a balancing act. Some of this may sound familiar from the junior presentation, but it's critically important. You can draw this district, you know, in mass, you can put your whole city in one of these districts and that's great in terms of generating funding capacity to pay for infrastructure projects. But the other side of the coin is how much are you encumbering property tax that would otherwise be unrestricted for your general fund? Again, just to keep the lights on, keep your municipal services. So you like to be focused in how we draw these boundaries and everything in a color on this graphic is an opportunity site of some form, a town center, housing element, opportunity sites, areas that are underutilized. And what, what's quite telling is, you know, a 236 acres all in total, everything in the color on this map, about 8% of your city in terms of acreage. In terms of value, existing assessed property value, it's actually less than that. It's about 4%, 145 million. And when we see ratios of that, 8% of your city by acreage, but only 4% of your city by value, that means, okay, we're focused on undervalued, under the average level of value property within your city. And we, and we like low numbers that are low like that, 4% of your city. You're only encumbering 4% in terms of your existing value. And there's a lot more value than that that is possible with private sector investment. So we like this level of focus and we know other potential partners, you know, again, fire district, county, they like levels of focus because everyone is concerned about keeping their own general funds solvent. So I, I told, I mentioned this bullet point list of 20 things in the law, it's quite broad. The discussion thus far about what might make sense in Scotts Valley includes some of these items, certainly town center, supportive infrastructure, things that would be meaningful for development on that site, be financially feasible, water and sewer improvements on Hernan and Granite Creek roadway interchanges, fire facilities, potential gap financing for affordable housing, mini facilities, wildfire prevention. These are merely examples. If this action does move today, this resolution of intention, none of this is binding, of course. This list can be modified. And even if you do go all the way to the finish line of forming this district, this is actually a plan that is required to be revisited at least once annually, make sure that the priorities are current as, as life obviously changes, especially for district duration that can be up to 50 years. So I will go into the weeds here because we often find it's important. I obviously encourage the questions on any of this. So I'm going to start top down and then left to right. This is all about how many dollars come out of this thing if you go down this path. The scenario A on this table represents what is just a portion that you control as a city, your share of the property tax pie. And what if, as mentioned earlier, you just allocate what you can afford to allocate, which is no portion of your existing revenues, but of the growth beyond today, 50% of it, just within that 230 some odd acres. If you encumber 50% of it and then the remaining 50% continues to flow unencumbered to your general fund, again, to keep the lights on, what does that get you? Within five years, that column represents what trickles in year one, year two, year three, four, year five after formation. And then you could even issue a bond in year five based on that year five revenue stream. But what does all that get you? Spendable money within five years, a bit less than $2 million. And to be quite honest, we probably would say that's probably not worth it. That level of funding, I am, the staff capacity would take to put it into place, it might not be worth it. And it does grow over time though, so in 10 years, that next column to the right, that year 10 number represents again, year one plus year two, all the way through year 10. What if you issued a bond in year 10? Six million bucks. Okay, maybe that's more meaningful, can bite some larger chunks out of more significant projects. And then with these districts, you know, they, they gain steam over time, more funding capacity is realized as, as value continues to grow over what could be a 50-year district lifetime. And that were to grow over 50 years, that the present value of that revenue stream for 50 years, about 17.8 million dollars. We, we like to focus on the present value number, that second to last column, because it accounts for the effective inflation, the time value of money. Number two, it's right, 42 million is, what if you just ignore inflation? What is that total dollar amount? It's about 42.6 million dollars. We, sort of as economists, we don't like to focus on that number. I think it over-represents, you know, what you have to spend because the value of that dollar 50 years from now is worth much less than the, the, a dollar today. So we'd say you're really only talking about 18 million dollars in value. So B is, B on this table going down to the next row is what, what could the county, what is the county's piece worth? Their, their 25% that they can afford to allocate, about a million bucks within five years, 3.8 within 10 years. And it's the same structure that as we go down this table, what's, what's the fire district's component worth at their, you know, the maximum level that they can afford at 30%? So A, B and C is sort of three different agencies. And then starting with letter D, these are some partnership scenarios. What if the city does its piece and it, and it joins with the county with their piece? What does that combined amount equal to? That's this 3.57 million in five years. But if the county's out, but the, but fire is in with you, that's letter E. City is in with its share, fire district's in with their, its share, then five years you're at that 4 million. And what if you're able in letter F to get everyone in at their respective share, city, county and fire? What does that get you? That's 5.69 million within five years. And so order of magnitude, we're often seeing, when, what's, when is it really sort of worth doing? It is quite objective or subjective, I should say, but we'd say probably like a letter D and down is when it starts making sense, when, when you're at, you know, kind of over $3 million within five years then, okay, then maybe it's worth time that it's, that it takes to put this thing into place. But without that, you know, maybe it's not worth it. So this slide is meant to highlight, you know, how many dollars we're talking about? What is the importance of partnership with other taxing entities? How does that change over time? Very importantly, you know, we keep talking about keeping the general fund solvent, keeping the lights on, being able to pay for each agency services. So we just prepared this exhibit. We also used the fire district board to say, look, if you're letter A, if the city's encumbering half of their amount over 50 years, what's the other 50% worth that's not encumbered? That's flowing to its general fund. The city is 50/50 straightforward. The county, if they're only allocating 25% to the district, that means the remaining 75% goes to its general fund. Letter C is, it's the fire district perspective, 30% being allocated to the financing district at 35 million, it's the remaining 70% or 82.6 million that flows. The idea is for anyone that partners, again, there needs to be this positive, positive return on investment for each agency's general fund. But this slide is more about, okay, so what are some of these other measures of community return on investment? Again, the housing, job creation, evaluate quantitatively, what are the wages associated with jobs that can be created, both from temporary construction of new development, but also ongoing permanent jobs from things like, you know, new retail development or new hospitality development, whatever the development may be. We do spend a good amount of time on that and then the bullet points at the bottom half are all, again, really for dollars and cents for each agency, what are you getting out of this over the long-term? Nine million for the city general fund, 12 million for the county general fund, eight million for the fire district general fund. And that's that, how we try to define bottom line, net, 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 new revenues that are catalyzed, net of piece of the property tax that is essentially being tied up in this financing district. And very importantly, net of new expenditures that also come with new development. Build new houses, that means you also have to provide, and public safety services, road maintenance, all these services that come along with it. So the analysis very deliberately goes into that bottom line. How do I come out? Ahead, neutral, negative? So fortunately at these levels we're fine, that can be a, a positive for each agency at these levels. And then that last bullet point, just mentioning it again, and it's this ability to attract yet other money, just state grants or projects in the community. Just a bit more detail on the various forms of grants that we're talking about. I'll keep moving for the sake of time, but multiple programs at the state level. The leader in this was state H C D, Housing Community Development with its, with its So process, we're, we're still, you know, at this early stage, we're really, you know, A and B, just getting into letter C on this table. All the work to date as the city manager was getting into was, does it make sense at all? What does a boundary look like? How many dollars do we see out of it? More recently, since June, it's been about, okay, what's each of our, each agency's potential level of financial participation? More recently, since June, it's been about, okay, what's each of our, each agency's potential level of financial participation that makes sense? So those percentages that I was mentioning earlier. And here we are in letter C, where it's the first action, it's non-binding, but it is the first action that can be considered by each agency. The city would be required to be the lead in your jurisdiction. And if this resolution of intention, that's a pending agenda item that says, going to continue down this path. Here's the boundary that we're looking at. Here's a, here's a quite expansive list of improvements. It's very deliberately broad because it gets dialed in later on, the specific projects that you want to get paid for. That really, that's really what follows in letters D through I. E is the preparation of that, that plan, I call the business plan. That infrastructure financing plan that has all that detail, that would be a next step. And then it's that plan that gets vetted quite publicly over a series of public meetings and hearings. Again, all of that noticing, I mentioned newspaper, website, mailers, culminating, we think potentially in August, if you continue down this path, with the last public hearing, it's that last August public hearing where those residents and property owners within the district have the opportunity to protest. They don't like any part of this. That really concludes the presentation. Obviously an opportunity to address any further questions, obviously a very specific subject matter. There is an action appended at non-binding resolution of intention. At the Fire District Board meeting in November, was indicated by the board where there was interest. Certainly not a promise or a firm commitment, but a firm interest to continue this conversation and potentially consider their own resolution of intention. But of course, you as the city council would have to take the first action since you're in the lead as the city, one of these districts. And eventually the county board of supervisors have to take their action. That's the order of it. So we're happily here to answer your, your questions and feedback for the time.
Great, thank you for that presentation. That's very helpful. I have a couple of questions and I'm sure council members here do as well. If you go back to the chart showing the breakdown of funding. So when you're doing these tables and you're assuming, you know, year five, that is based on an assumption that we have a certain percentage of the properties developed. If, if that overperforms or underperforms, like how is, how is that number generated? And could it, you know, could we get to a bonding capacity that's larger quicker, depending upon what happens within the city limits? Or within, I say, within the 236 acres that are, that are part of this district?
That's exactly right, Mayor. So what this district does, it's not committing you when you form it to a certain number of dollars. We're merely making projections on what we think is realistically achievable. If development comes out of the ground sooner, faster, more intensely than this, then yes, you realize a greater level of funding capacity. All these numbers go up. If you underperform, or say nothing happens in all these sites, you're not losing anything. You've not promised this money anywhere, but the projections would go down. Very importantly, the way these work, before you do anything like commit the dollars to something like a bond issuance, you're not able to do that until you're actually realizing that level of revenue. Year five bond would be based on actual year five revenue, not what Osman or anyone thinks is going to happen in year six, seven, eight, or beyond. It's actually happening in year five. That's what your encumbrance is going to be based on.
And so if we wanted to take a bond out in year five, it's not the future value that we're able to borrow on. Is it, so if we have, let's say, $2 million in bonding capacity, it's a fully just a $2 million bond at that point?
At that point, correct. And if values continue to grow, which they likely would, you can do if you wanted to, a subsequent bond, let's say in year 10, based on the growth between year five.
And that's why when you look at section F there, where you see the city plus the county plus the fire district, you start to get into numbers of like real dollar amounts that could actually help to fund projects, right? And so when you're saying, you know, where that's where it starts to make sense, on a lot of these financing districts, kind of what's the, what's the range that you're seeing in that? By, you know, you're looking at year five, is this at the very, very low end? Or is this kind of like right in the ballpark of what, what you're seeing?
This would, I'd say, your scenario F is about 50th percentile of the districts across the state. Helpful, yeah, I'll get over to other members of council. Yeah, that's more clear.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Joe's questions for you first. So I want to thank you for everything that you've done to walk us through this process. You've met with us a number of times now. It's great to see you in person, online. I know I probably look taller than you think, but yeah. All right, so in the event, as the mayor was talking about here, in the event that we underperform, we're looking at year five, it doesn't look so hot. Do we, or could we have the ability to withhold bonding at that point until we're in a more favorable bonding capacity? Pros and cons of that or?
Yes, absolutely right. You underperform, maybe what would have been a plan to issue in year five turns into a plan to wait until year seven or year eight. So again, you're not encumbered until you actually take that action. And you can't take that action until you're actually seeing the level of revenue. So if you underperformed and the numbers were smaller, you can choose at that point to issue just a smaller bond, or you can choose to wait. But you're not pre-committed in any way.
And if I understood you correctly in your answer to that, so let's say we are underperforming at year five. And we decide, oh, we're going to go ahead and bond a smaller amount. You have the option to bond again or like year 10, I think is the scenario. Am I correct in that?
Absolutely, yeah. We think most of these will issue multiple rounds.
Debt.
There are somewhat similar district, the community facilities district, it's a different type of, prevalent across the state. They may issue four, five, six, even seven series of bonds over the years, biting it off in chunks as value actually grows. But we think multiple is a likely scenario.
Great, thanks. Just one more question here. So typically, I see that we, at the bottom of the slide that we have showing here, we've got some numbers here. But I'm just wondering typically, kind of what percentage of our valuation do you see that would go towards both a bonding cost and administration?
What percentage of your value? So in terms of a sort of citywide value, this one is actually incredibly focused at four percent of your value citywide. So they very focused surgically focused district in terms of your general fund exposure. But just to provide more color on some of these other terms, we've deliberately taken some conservative assumptions here. That the most recent bond, the EIFD bond was in West Sacramento, summer of this year. And we're assuming a 6% interest rate in these numbers. They actually achieved a 5% interest rate, a lot better. Their debt service coverage was actually about this, 150% debt service coverage admin charge. You asked about sort of staff time to administer these. That $25,000 number in the footnotes is pretty realistic, once these things really get going. But I'll be very transparent in expectation settings. First few years are pretty quiet, there's not a lot to do. The dollars flowing in are not huge, so you're not going to spend 25 grand in admin. You might spend 2,000 or $5,000 in admin off of a revenue stream that may only be like $50,000. And we say the staff time involved or any consulting time, it scales up as there are actually dollars to spend on projects. But other than that, you're really only doing one meeting annually. You're required to revisit the plan, adopt an annual report, which says, how'd you do versus how you think you were going to do or how you said you were going to do. There may not be a lot of revision, so it doesn't take a lot of work, you're not spending a lot of time. But it's also not delivering a lot of results. So that's why I say it for expectation setting purposes. These things take three, four, five years before you're really cooking and at a point make some meaningful investment.
Great, so much.
Remember Jeff?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I have a question, you may not have any information on this, but if you do, I would appreciate it. So I'm curious, if in your experience in working with other communities, if you've seen any other low property tax cities move forward with one of these financing districts? And if so, what the impact has been on their general funds? Or if we, if it's even been in place long enough to see that yet?
Thank you. Yeah, we've seen low property tax cities do it, but only with a partnership. So we look at Carson, Om Dale, some of the Riverside County jurisdictions that are similar to you in the five, six, maybe seven cents per dollar of property tax range. They're just not doing it alone, that those agencies were fortunately successful with getting partnerships with their taxing entities. They have been able to do it. General fund exposure in those examples that I've mentioned fortunately has been, careful with my wording, it's been positive and sort of net positive in terms of the general fund. The boundaries were very surgically defined like Carson. It's like a checkerboard, honestly like yours, very specific parcels across the city where land was already vacant. So not a lot to lose, but a lot to gain. Results have been pretty positive. The private sector community using Carson as an example, very positively received the city's commitment to infrastructure because that has been the holdup, that jurisdiction, particularly as related to roadway infrastructure. But to be honest, the jury is still out on many of these. We really only have like five of them that have been existence long enough. West Sacramento, San Diego, Tameza, Laverne. That were the ones formed in like 2017, 18, 19. They have now this five, six years of revenue history. Those are the ones that are issuing these big bonds and actually doing the biggest projects. I don't want to paint the rosiest picture for some of these that are still getting off the.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Well, I guess you just answered mine was, that's a very similar question, just examples of similar cities. And are there examples there five, 10 years down the road here and what are the results? But I guess if we could see some of that information as a follow-up, like honestly, night, but.
Absolutely. Absolutely, we'll do, council member. So the small, like Laverne is a appropriately smaller one there, about 110 acres, your 236 acres is about 110. So on the smaller side, they have been around since 2017. Theirs was odd that their county wasn't ready to be their partner until three years later. They formed in 2017, the county joined them in 2020, after the county adopted a policy for participation. And their first projects were in like 2022. They started small, $4 million of streetscape improvement at E and Second Street in Old Town Laverne. That's how these tend to start, the smaller stuff on the list. And then picking up steam until you get to somewhere like West Sacramento that they do a $57 million bond and they're biting off huge trunks of projects. That's a much older one, eight years of revenue history. But we, but yes, we have case study information that we absolutely provide.
And just to follow up on that, if in your example where in the first year, let's say there's only $50,000 collected and you have a small amount of money, that, that money is encumbered, but it's not cumulative? Is it being held out from the city? And so it's being set aside and it's starting to grow. So at year five, that $2 million total is accumulated revenue that we've not received. Is that right?
That's correct, Mayor.
And so, and what does it go into? How does it, what's the, how does that set aside look? And is a property, is the, is there income being received on those dollars that are set aside? And like, what is, what's that look like for a city?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So the closest analogy is something like an enterprise fund, or if you have any, you know, CFDs or landscaping and lighting districts, there's sort of separate funds that you would control. It would be separate from the general fund, but you would have this ability to invest them like you can invest your own general fund dollars and municipal instruments. So you're actually getting something, even if it's a small amount of interest, the dollars aren't just staying there. They can choose to just let it accrue. What some of the agencies do in those early years is because things like planning and design costs are eligible, they are sometimes using those smaller dollar amounts, at least to get going on planning and design work, some of the projects. What sometimes happens is even if there's, like the costs to form this thing, those are general fund costs that you're advancing. You could actually reimburse those if you so choose, those early years of dollar amounts. For just standing up the district and then noticing that's involved, all that newspaper and mailing stuff. So and sometimes those early years are just about using it right away as a marketing tool for grant applications.
And then, and to your point, it would make us more competitive. So let's say we were going after a specific grant related to parking or housing or fire services. That could be used as a tool saying, hey, we have this, we have set aside money that we're ready to use. And that bumps you up because these things are scored, is that right?
Explicitly, correct.
Great. Other questions from council? I'd like to open it up to the public and I'd like to start with our fire chief, who has been discussing this with his team and board. And just hear from him on, on the response that you've received at the fire district.
Sure, good evening, council. I'm Mark Carrar, Fire Chief with the Scotts Valley Fire District. Our board has been discussing this for a couple of months and I applaud the city manager for bringing this to us as an option. And as you know, we've been struggling to fund our fire station with multiple bond attempts, both of them had failed. Although we don't see this as a total funding solution for that, we see this as a potential another tool in the toolbox. As well as the conversations I've been having with our board is a strong city taxation model is a strong fire district taxation model. And we also recognize the value, and if we partner with the city, the potential to get other partners on board as well. Our board discussed this on November 12th and they have asked for staff to bring back a similar non-binding resolution for them to consider. There has been no negative feedback. I assume when it's presented to the board, they will adopt it, but I can't say that for sure. So we are interested in pursuing this right now. The example we, the board shared is this is a yellow light, let's continue with, with caution. Making sure that it's non-binding, but allowing us to learn more information about it as well.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Thank you.
And before you step off, I, we don't usually do back and forth, but if there are questions from our council, this is a great opportunity for us to ask that. Does anyone on our council have any questions about what the fire district or?
I think I have an idea, but I think just wonderful to have the partnership. And some of the ways that you think this can be mutually beneficial, which you've touched on, but is there plans for future?
Sure, no, great question. Obviously, as we start to explore the different opportunities that exist within a partnership like this, if the board agrees to move forward with it, to establish the EIFD, the main priority that we've been discussing obviously is potentially being able to fund a portion of our fire station, lessening the burden to the rest of the taxpayers if and when we go back out to the voters for consideration of another measure for the fire station. That's one part. We also see the value in potential risk reduction efforts going on around the community, around the different public and private spaces that are here. And investing in those to create a safer community, if you will. So those are the primary two that we're looking at right now, although as I think we dive into this and peel away the layers of those onion, of that onion that we may see and realize other opportunities that exist.
Both of those are very good, so thank you.
Thank you.
I guess my question would be also chief, so if with future development of the city and we don't know, you know, what's going to happen with building height and if the department needed additional apparatus, I guess that this could also be used to fund apparatus that would help the general community correct fire safety? And if we needed new engines or new trucks, would that work towards that as well?
It's a specific clause for a useful life of 15 years or more, which sometimes makes it difficult for things like vehicles to be eligible. Interestingly, there's only one call out as an exception to that in the law. It is quite topical. It was for vegetation control equipment in vehicles as a matter of wildfire prevention. And so that happened, again, every legislative session, it's like, what's going on in the state? We see it reflected in some of this legislation for perhaps a normal apparatus. I don't think it would qualify based on the law today.
But just along that topic though, that is a great question. One of the things the fire district is considering outside of the EIFD is new development impact fees. And we don't have the authority to exercise those. And we're working with the city to potentially have you handle that on our behalf. And those monies would go back to our coffers. And things, in fact, we've included in our capital improvement plan, the potential need for a ladder truck down the road or some sort of partnership for that. And if it's in our capital improvement plan, then that care, we can use a portion of those impact fees to support that. So as the community grows, as the taxation increases, those impact fees would be applied. And that would allow us to use those dollars towards a ladder truck or some other type of specialty equipment that would be needed for higher buildings.
Thank you. Thank you for raising your question. All right, well, thank you, chief. Appreciate you being here and we do really appreciate the fire district taking it seriously and looking into ways that we can partner together to make this a meaningful solution for our community. Great. Matthew? Matthew.
I thought I have a good background in finance, but I think this gentleman did. Perfect financial engineering, you know, these Wall Street guys, you know, they just. Project 50 years in the future revenue stream, you know, and let's. Ring the cash register and sell the bonds, you know. I think. For example, you know, I just trying to inform myself. Like you sell a bond to, you know, pay the fire chief and the other. Expenses. You have to have a revenue stream for that bond, you know, to get it graded, you know, high quality junk grade or good investment grade. So this type of bond, if there is a no revenue stream, you know. So the city has to pay 10%, you know. And then it eats with the other expenses. So I'm kind of not as good as you are, but you're a professional in this area. But but the thing is that. You know, this junk, junk bond, I think this is basically goes into the junk because there is no revenue. I mean, this bypasses the whole democratic structure, you know. There is no vote, no, no public input in there. You know, the fire chief, you know, I have a very much respect for you, sir. But twice the public turned it down, turned down the financing of the bounds. And it's very rude to come here and say, I want money. You know, cut the salary, lay off people, just live within your means. You know, I have a good respect for you, you know, you're a chief, you know. But you know, have a respect for the community, you know, people don't have money to pay insurance. But you guys are getting big salary, you know.
Matthew, if you could direct the comments to the.
You know, I mean, in the banner, in the banner, there was opinion. The opinion said that. The community is broke. And the chief and the fire people getting a five digit, $300 salary and coming here. So we want more money. Where the money is coming from? I mean, you're loading the public, you know, twice, 60% public voted against it. And you're still coming here and say, I want more money. I mean, you know, you, you're trustee of the public. You honor the public sentiment. Don't go against the public. You know, the public is not a toy. You push him around. The people are hurting.
Thank you, Matthew.
Well, I'd like to end this on a positive note from the public, I guess. But listen, if you walk around Scotts Valley like I do all the time and you look at the roads and the conditions is just the roads. I'm very thankful that you did Whispering Pines, even though I don't live on it because that road needed it badly. But every road on the west end of this town needs, it needs help. And so. I think this is a good way to get money to fix the infrastructure because this city has struggled with that ever since Borland left here. And I, Donna, you know how to get ahold of me. If for some reason you want someone from the county to go talk to the county supervisor about why they should be part of this. I'm happy to do that if you ask me to do it. I'm not just going to do it on my own. But if you want somebody to go talk to the supervisor, I'll do it because you all know this. But this road, Mount Herman Road. Is a freeway from the San Lorenzo Valley. And the big trucks and the commercial vehicles and just the onslaught of traffic, even on Lockwood Lane, it's the same thing. And those people are coming here, you know, smashing our asphalt and they're not doing anything to help us fix it. So I think the county should partner with the city in this process to help get these bonds to fix the roads and the infrastructure. So I'm offering, Donna has my phone number, so.
I do.
So if the council, if you decide among yourselves that you want somebody to start talking to the board, the board member up here. I'll be happy to go do that, so. But I think it's a great idea to partner up and spend the money in the infrastructure. And it seems like a pretty good idea to me, as little as I know, it looks pretty good to me.
Thank you for that feedback. Any other members of the public? Hey, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council and I'll just start with, just kind of, let's. There was, I think, a misconception on, because these are dollars that we're allocating based on future tax dollars actually received. Right? And it's a portion, 50% of the city's revenue, 25% of the counties. They were to participate 30% of the fire districts on future development. So this is a tool, as I understand it, that would be in the city's toolbox or the fire district's toolbox or the county's toolbox as part of this board. And we'd have public meetings with this board that we would have public input and comment onto what we are investing into. And so things like infrastructure projects that the public brought up or fire district projects or projects for the new town center that could answer, encourage development within town. This is a way, we used to have something that the state gave us, they gave us dollars for our redevelopment agency. And when the state did away with that, they not only clawed back all the dollars they'd given, but they also took it away in the future. Those used to be used by communities like ours to do things like, that's how we got our library here in town. Those that they remember that was how that was purchased. And so we don't have those dollars now. So this is a tool that enables communities like ours to invest in the future. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Correct.
Yeah, so I think just to level set on that, this is not, we're not bonding against something that doesn't exist. These are not junk bonds, they're underwritten. I just want to make that clear. So I, I will. If I'm going to ask staff, what you're looking for from us tonight is an agreement that we're willing to continue to carry this forward. And and then maybe a commitment from us on who we'd like to see on that future financing district board and how we would appoint that. Are there other things you're looking for us tonight?
No, those are the two recommended actions. The first one is to adopt resolution 2080 declaring the council's intention to establish the Scots Valley Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District and establishing the Scots Valley EIFD Public Financing Authority, which is that board that would oversee. And then that's the next step in going through the, the, the next steps of the whole process, which Joe explained, which would include developing the financing plan, having those public meetings and developing like the bylaws of the board and this new entity. And so if you choose to move forward with that, then in order to lead the work of the next steps, we also recommend that you appoint two members of the city council to the public financing authority board and one alternate in case that is needed for the, to move forward with setting up the governance structure.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. All right, let me bring it back to council for discussion on her tonight and concerns, like what, what, what are the feelings? I'll start with.
Yeah, I really appreciate the information. I appreciate the consideration from partners who could potentially join in with this, on this. And I think it's a great way, as one of the speakers, Mr. Dietrich pointed out, this has been a struggle for Scotts Valley for years. And this is something that I think could really help us. My one suggestion in looking at this is in terms of how we do the appointment of council members. I'd like to see us sort of follow the same process that we use and that it's at the mayor's appointment, similar to how we do our other committees. And commission appointments and then ratified by council would be my recommendation.
And since we're in the middle of a term right now, maybe talk through tonight how that first appointment would look and throw something. Choose to go. Beautiful. Councilmember Jet.
Yeah, I really appreciate the presentation and the thoughtful responses to each of our questions. I personally think that this sounds like a good tool for us to move forward with. And I think that it is meaningful if we. Show our other partners that this is something that we stand. With, I'm a little bit disappointed that we don't have anyone from the county here tonight because it would be nice for them to see that this is something that we take seriously. And that we are moving, would like to move forward with and we would like to see them join on as partners. But I'm so grateful to the fire chief for being here and for showing your support because I think you stand to be a very important partner for us. And I really appreciate you being here tonight. So yeah, that's my only thought.
Thank you.
I'm ready to move a resolution.
Okay.
If there's no other question, comments?
I guess I would just add, it does sound like a good plan from what I've heard so far. And as I think we'll learn more as we get farther in the process. And yeah, I think it's important. As the numbers show, you know, to have partners like the fire district and the county hopefully. To really make the biggest impact for the community.
Great. And I'll just share because when we've met with your team before, you know, one of the things that I took away that I think is very important about this is, you know, we'll be able to use this in the future to help get public projects moving forward. And those, and you did that, there was a slide you showed where there's future tax dollars. They're going to come through just our normal sales tax. So as we create these new buildings and jobs and housing and all of that helps underwrite everything else we do. So we may be giving up a portion of our future property tax dollars just for these properties that we're talking about tonight. But that's going to enable us to really build towards the future with dollars we don't. So I think that that was a big thing I took away early on. And I think so as a council, it makes a lot of sense. I appreciate that staff's work this year as well, helped shepherd this forward, work with our partners like our fire district. And I know we're working with our supervisor as well to bring this to the county. They are aware, even though they're not here tonight in person, we did talk and they are learning about this. And I thought it was interesting, one of the takeaways that. I'll share supervisor Martinez that, you know, what, what, what other, she wanted to know what other areas we're doing. What other surrounding counties using these tools? And recently Salinas, I understand in Monterey County is working on one. And so they're, and so she's going to be talking with other supervisors from other regions to understand how this can really help. But she was enthusiastic about the potential, so I thought that was good.
I want to add my thanks because. You did, the two of you, I appreciate the work you've done and not just sending an email, but actually meeting and going through all of this. And people don't realize that Scotts Valley's got the lowest property tax around, 6.5%. We had to fight to get that, was 4%. And so we, we struggle more with that loss, with that. Difference in sale and property tax where others get as much as double, 12%, even 18%. So I've had people say, well, why are we broke? You know, why are we, we do a really good job with far less funds than other jurisdictions do. And this to me is an opportunity to work around the challenges that we've been given and be able to do some good things, particularly after having lost RDA and other, other funding sources. So I appreciate the work, appreciate all the information and appreciate the work you're doing with the other jurisdictions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And so let's first start with the resolution. Sounds like we're ready for that.
I move resolution 2080. The residents of the city council see as Scots Valley declaring intention to establish the Scots Valley Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District to finance the construction, repair, acquisition and/or maintenance of capital improvements and facilities, including the acquisition and/or remediation of land for such improvements and facilities, establishing a public financing authority and authorizing certain other actions related thereto.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion to second, any discussion? All in favor, let's signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstain? Okay, motion passes unanimously. It's great. And the second piece of this is talking about how we're going to appoint people to that board. So I'll take council member Clark's suggestion. I think the way, the way I would like to mix this up unless there's other thought, I think. Councilor Clark has demonstrated an interest in this and I think you've done a good job on RTC. I think good advocate for us. But I also think we should have. People from our town center, since this is the basis of why we're doing this. So I'd like to have, I think myself and council that as the alternate would be the correct placement. So we have both the town center have kind of the team mindset. I think that would be a good mix on this unless there's.
Actually a suggestion I was going to ask if you're willing.
Yeah.
But it did feel like the right, it goes hand in hand.
Yeah. Any other thoughts on that?
Sounds like a great plan.
All right, yes. Yep. Good. All right. And so we have, we have, do we need a motion on that or just that just to staff? Okay, so the motion will be that myself and council member Clark will serve on the, on the board or would be the appointees to the board. And then council member Jet will be the alternate for the, to make the three member roundup. And then annually, the mayor will have the opportunity to renew those appointments, just like we do our other board appointments we do annually.
I move that motion.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, all in favor, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstain? All right, motion passes unanimously. So thank you and thank you for your time coming tonight. We really appreciate it. It was a great presentation and thank you, chief, for being here as well. So and with that, we're looking forward, do we have any other, that that item's closed down? Anything else you needed from us there?
Not on that item.
Okay, great. Well, then we'll go to our public hearing, which we were, couldn't get to earlier. So we'll work backwards in our agenda here to the public hearing. This is a public hearing to consider the planning commission's recommendation to amend the Scots Valley Municipal Code Title 16 and 17 to clarify requirements for accessory dwelling units, junior ADUs, urban lot splits, SB9 residential development, ministerial design review. So I'll kick that over to our city manager to begin the discussion.
Yeah, so you are familiar with Ben Noble, our consultant who's been working on these ADU regulations. Ben is joining us remotely and he'll be presenting on this item.
Great, thank you, Ben. Take it away.
Great. So again, my name is Ben Noble. I'm a city planning consultant assisting the city with these zoning code and subdivision ordinance amendments. These amendments include or address three topics. Primarily, they address the ADU ordinance, but also some amendments to the city's SB9 ordinance and ministerial design review procedures. The amendments were previously reviewed by the planning commission. And on November 20th, the planning commission recommended approval of the amendments. There's one change to the planning commission's recommendation having to do with ADU parking that I'll address in more detail later in the presentation. So starting with the ADU ordinance, an ADU is a dwelling unit that's secondary to the main dwelling on a lot with complete and independent living facilities for residents. ADUs can take a variety of forms, including being detached from the primary dwelling, attached to the primary dwelling or converted in converted space. And they can be on a lot with a single family or a multifamily dwelling. The contents of a local ADU ordinance are prescribed by state law and that state law is very specific. In 2024, Scots Valley adopted a new ADU ordinance that went into effect at that time. And as required by state ADU law, the city submitted the newly adopted ADU ordinance to the California Department of Housing and Community Development last year. And HCD found in their review of the ordinance that a few changes are needed, in their opinion, for the ADU ordinance to comply with state ADU law. And after reviewing that letter from HCD, staff concluded that the best course would be to make the changes to the ADU ordinance consistent with the HCD letter. So the changes in the ADU ordinance to address HD comments concern the number of allowed multifamily ADUs, removing a definition from, for car share vehicles, clarifying the rules that apply to what's known as statewide exemption ADUs, modifying the height of a detached ADU. And then also making an adjustment to the approach for. Um, and then also making an adjustment to the approach for ADU floor area and height standards to base that on zoning district rather than on lot size. And all of these changes really, um, do not result in a substantive change to the rules for ADUs in Scotts Valley. It's, uh, more clarifying what the state law is that applies to these units, and making sure that that's clear in the local ordinance and consistent with state law. Uh, there's a few changes as well to the ADU ordinance that, um, address new state laws that were adopted by the legislature this year and will go into effect, uh, in January of 2026. And these concern the process and timeframe for the city to act on ADU applications, and then also clarifying standards that apply to junior accessory dwelling units, um, which are small ADUs that are internal to a single-family home. And so staff is recommending adopting changes to the ADU ordinance at this time to address these new state laws, so that when those laws go into effect in 2026, the city's local ordinance will be consistent with those. And so at the Planning Commission hearing, uh, the city received a letter on the proposed ADU ordinance amendments from Cal HDF, which is a statewide housing advocacy organization, um, commenting that, um, the ADU, uh, about the statewide exemption ADUs and the discretionary process, um, to, for the city to allow for deviation from design standards. And so, uh, staff has reviewed that letter from Cal HDF and recommends clarifying in the ADU ordinance that statewide exemption ADUs are exempt from onsite parking requirements, um, but not making any additional changes, um, to the ADU ordinance as, uh, commented by Cal HDF. So, moving on to the SB9 ordinance. Um, SB9 is a state law, uh, that requires cities to allow up to four dwelling units in a single-family zone. The city adopted a local SB9 ordinance in 2024, and then in 2025, made some amendments to that SB9 ordinance to address new state law that went into effect last year, that require cities to, um, impose the same standards on SB9 projects that apply to other types of development in the zone, unless state law specifically requires the standards to be different, or if the standard is more permissive, um, for, uh, SB9 development. So the city recently received an SB9 application, um, and was reviewing the local SB9 ordinance, and did find a standard, um, in the local ordinance, um, that was more restrictive for SB9 development than for single-family dwellings, um, and it's not something that's authorized by state law. And for that reason, uh, there's the need for a minor cleanup amendment to the local SB9 ordinance, um, regarding the height of SB9 development. So, uh, there's a small amendment, uh, included in these, uh, proposed amendments that clarify that the maximum allowed building height for SB9 development in the si- single-family zoning district is the same as for a single-family dwelling. So that is something that would be, uh, consistent with state law requirements. And, um, the last item in these amendments concerns ministerial design review. In 2024, the city established a new ministerial design review process, um, to allow for by right approval of housing projects on housing element opportunity sites. Uh, this is something that was, um, uh, required to comply with the housing element and state housing element law. Uh, when reviewing these, um, uh, new provisions, uh, it came to our attention that a minor cleanup amendment, uh, is needed to clarify public noticing hearing requirements for ministerial design review applications. So included in the proposed amendments is new language that clarifies that no public notice or hearing is required for ministerial design review applications that are acted on by the community development director. If there is a, um, uh, ministerial design review application that is reviewed by the Planning Commission, uh, then public notice and hearing requirements apply. And in that case, those requirements are the same as for discretionary design review applications. So a minor cleanup amendment to clarify, um, the intent, uh, and, uh, the rules for the ministerial design review applications. So that concludes the overview of the proposed amendments. Uh, staff is recommending that these amendments be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. The ADU and SB9 and ordinance amendments are specifically identified as exempt, um, by SEQUA statute. Um, and then also for some of the other amendments, um, the common sense exemption also applies as these amendments, um, have no possibility of resulting in a significant, significant effect, effect on the environment. So staff's recommendation and the Planning Commission's recommendation is for the city council to adopt, uh, the draft ordinance, amending the subdivision ordinance and the zoning code to clarify requirements for accessory dwelling units, junior accessory dwelling units, um, and urban lot splits, and SB9 residential development, uh, and the ministerial design review process. Um, so that completes, uh, staff presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you for that presentation, Ben. I'll, uh, bring it over to council for questions. Clark?
Great, uh, thank you. Um, these questions are probably more geared towards, uh, Taylor, or a little bit, but looking at the revisions that we have to make, I understand they're, they're at the behest of HCD. Do we feel like we are maintaining local control where we can or where it's permissible?
Yes, we do.
And then, taking a look at these, are, are you aware if there are any current projects that are affected by these revisions or have to be amended in any way because of these?
I'm not aware of any, and I don't anticipate there to be any.
Then, um, and this one may be the city attorney, I'll have to field here, but what are some potential consequence? Is taking a look at HCD's letter to us, they make, uh, notation in that we have one of two options, and if we fail to do that, they're going to refer us to the state attorney general's office. And so in the event that we didn't comply, what are some potential con- consequences that, that we could face? Yeah.
So if we did not make the recommended changes, then they could, um, report this to the attorney general's office, who could then file a lawsuit, um, try to force us into a settlement. Most likely, they would try to get injunctive relief that would require us to make the changes. Um, we are required as part of our housing element to adopt the ADU ordinance that we've done. We, our position is we've done what we're required to do, um, but that is also a potential exposure that could be argued we were not compliant with housing element.
Yeah, I, I guess the second part of that for me is for those who say, oh my gosh, I can't believe council passed these things, destroy my neighborhood, or, uh, some of these things that we hear, um, there's some real consequences if we don't follow through, don't comply with what the state has asked us to do. So essentially, we're, we're in a no choice kind of position with trying to do the right thing. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark. And then Councilmember Jet?
Um, Taylor or Ben, would either of you be able to talk more on the parking requirement and the change to the parking requirement with ADUs?
Sure, Ben.
Sure. So this parking requirement concerns a certain type of ADU known in state law as statewide exemption ADUs. Um, and this is a, a certain category of ADU where cities are limited in the types of standards that can be imposed on these ADUs. And statewide exemption ADUs fall into four categories. Um, it's ADUs that are converted from internal space within a, um, single-family dwelling. It's establishing a new detached ADU on a single-family lot that's no more than 800 square feet or 16 feet in height. It's, um, on a multifamily lot, uh, converting, uh, building space that's currently not habitable into an ADU, so a converted ADU in a multifamily. And then it's also establishing new detached ADUs on a multifamily lot. So these are the statewide exemption ADUs. And, um, HCD has an interpretation of state law, um, that cities cannot require parking for statewide exemption ADUs. Um, and in HCD's initial review of our ordinance, they did not bring that up as an issue. Um, the city received the letter from Cal HDF, um, that pointed this out. And in our review of HCD's guidance on the subject, HCD is consistent in their interpretation, um, that, uh, parking cannot be required for statewide exemption ADUs, despite the fact that they didn't bring it up in their review letter. And given that, um, we concluded that the best course of action is to be consistent with HCD's official interpretation on the subject, and amend, uh, the local ADU ordinance to be clear that for a statewide exemption ADU, um, parking is not a requirement.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Nothing further on mine.
Or what?
Uh, yeah, nothing further, that was my one question as well, so.
Um, I did have a couple that sparked some curiosity. One was, uh, you know, the idea that you're taking away, shouldn't say maybe, we're now no longer, uh, required to provide public notice to neighbors on any of the ministerial design review applications, um, which, uh, seems counter to how cities usually operate. I mean, we, don't you want to put your neighbors on notice that there's going to be a change, and people should be able to come to that minister, even if, if we're having a hearing? Um, are we allowed to notice, but it's not required? Or are we just not going to be noticing anymore? Because I'm just curious how that actually works in. Ben, do you have some thoughts? I, I might have some thoughts after you.
Yeah, so, um, with, with a ministerial design review application, the only criteria that the city staff would use, um, to, to, to decide to approve or deny the application is conformance with objective standards. So there's no discretion involved. And the ministerial design review applications that go to staff are, are of a sort of smaller scale nature than the ones that go before the Planning Commission. So having a public notice and, um, the opportunity for, or, or an invitation for public comment on the project could be setting up the public for frustration when they discover that there's really nothing, um, that, uh, to comment on, because it's just a consideration of whether or not the project conforms with objective standards. Now, for the Planning Commission ministerial design review projects, those are of a larger scale where we felt that, um, having some notification that there is a pending application of this, of this nature, um, so that the public knows that this is happening, and it doesn't become a big surprise once construction starts and it just comes completely out of nowhere. So despite the fact that the Planning Commission really can only consider conformance with objective standards when deciding to approve or deny the application, we felt that there's still a public benefit to having that public notification and hearing process. So that's the, that's the reason why there's a difference in the approach between a staff-level discretionary or ministerial design review action and one that goes before the Planning Commission.
But to your point, wouldn't the neighbors still be frustrated even on the, in the first scenario, the ministerial design review for, uh, held by the planning director, when they see sticks going up next to them? It seems like it's just an opportunity to educate people on the way the state has shifted, um, what, what a city has discretionary. Because we can say it at these meetings, it doesn't mean that the public understands, right? Because, you know, it, it's not until something happens at your next door neighbor's house that you actually start maybe paying attention, and then, but then you don't get notice, you know? Why didn't, I, I, I think I would be, as a neighbor that's not informed, I would be more upset to find something happening and not have had some public notice about it. Even if I had public notice, it would make sense that then, well, I go in and I learn, oh, well, I didn't understand that we're not, that we're just here to, to basically, uh, rubber stamp this unless it's somehow violating our objective design standard. That would be my, but I, but I, but I, what I'm hearing from, uh, the Housing Defense Fund is they don't want us noticing neighbors. Is that right?
Well, the Cal HDF letter was about the ADUs.
Yeah.
And you're bringing up the ministerial design review process, which is for a different type of project.
SB9.
Yeah, and so, and so I would say in response to your comments that there are cities that do, um, what you're, uh, I think suggesting, which is some sort of notice of a pending decision on a ministerial action, um, that's decided by staff, just, um, as a way to inform the neighbors, for example, that there is this pending application and that there will be a decision made on it, um, as a way to notify residents that this is coming, and also gives them an opportunity to become more educated about the process that the state is requiring from the city.
I, I tend to think that, uh, informing the public is better, you know, in that scenario than just being surprised by it. But I, but our, our, uh, I, I, I'll, I'll kick it over to our, uh, planning director because you'd have more experience in what you're witnessing with this and whether it's something that should be concerned.
So, this is a relatively new process, it's dictated by the state. And so we're, we're adopting this, we're starting to work with it. We don't have a lot of experience, a lot of jurisdictions are new to this as well, the ones that Ben referred to. So I think it's something that, um, it's hard to predict how it'll play out, and I think that there are other opportunities for people to receive notice. We do have current projects on our website, um, but I think this is something we should track and see if there's an opportunity or a need to provide that notification you're speaking of as we go forward here. I mean, I, I don't know if we'd be able to incorporate anything here tonight, because that would be a bit of a process, but we could certainly maybe look at it over the next year and come back, see if there's an opportunity or a need that arises.
Well, we're not prohibited by this from, it doesn't seem like the way it's written, we're prohibited from providing notice.
That's correct.
We're just not required to.
Yeah.
And so we could still take a policy as a city to provide neighbors notice just as a courtesy so they can learn about how SB9 may have changed their neighbors' zoning in a way they weren't aware of, and what the city is, and is not allowed to do. I, I, I just think that's better because these things are moving so fast, just like your department doesn't quite yet have a handle on it. Certainly the public doesn't, right? So it just feels to me like that would be a good policy. And then, and then revisit it and say, well, we're, you know, we didn't even have one application, or we've had 10 applications and this, we did find this helpful to notify the neighbors because people came in and they were surprised to learn that SB9 allowed, you know, lot splits, or it allowed, uh, changes like the, you know, whatever, whatever the rules are going to be, is that okay? And, and maybe that's a question for the city attorney.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, in, in consultation here with the city attorney, it's something that we could adopt a policy on that. I wouldn't necessarily be in the ordinance because we don't have that in works here tonight, but we could certainly take that to the policy level and notify people as we move forward, those types of applications.
And then on the other comments from the HDF, um, it is kind of a weird comment, the city may not provide a discussion discretionary process to allow an applicant to deviate from an objective ADU design standpoint. Well, you know, uh, the discretionary versus the objective is where it gets confused. the discretionary versus the objective is where it gets confusing, right? So maybe the city attorney could comment on on that.
So in our ordinance, what we have is if you want, if a property owner wanted to do more than what we allow under these sections of the code, then we could have a discretionary process. So there is no discretionary process for what is required to be ministerial under state law. What we're saying is if you want to do more than that, we'll have a discretionary process.
And and that discretionary process, and so when the HDF is objecting to that, we feel that we're, we're confident that we're not flying in the face of some state law. So, okay. I don't have any other questions. Well, let's open it up to the public for questions, comments. I'll go ahead and close public comment and I'll bring it back to council.
Just, I just want to, one thing is just that, you know, I hear from a lot of people, how can, people don't realize that we have limited input or control over ADUs. And I think, you know, anything we can do to help, not, not, not that we'll reach everyone, but anything we can do to help get that word out would be helpful and appreciate all the work's being done. And I know that the things keep changing rapidly, so it's a catch up for everyone involved. But appreciate that work. Anything we can do to help inform the community, I think would, as Derek said, at least we can make that effort, so.
One more, just as a clarification, then every ordinance change that we are making is to comply with the state. That is what has sparked it. There is nothing beyond state requirements, correct?
What's included in her is in response to the comments we received from HCD.
And there, and there have been just so many changes to the ADU and SB nine ordinances. At the state level, we get numerous housing bills every year. And then we're required as a city to comply with it. So we're, we're just keeping up with state ordinances and trying to, trying our best to comply. Even when we get different comments back at different time points from HCD, we're still trying to be good, a good city and comply with what they're asking. Okay, so.
Just one, sorry, Mr., just one clarification. Tonight, we're actually introducing the ordinance, not adopting it. And I apologize for that.
This is a first reading.
Okay, so then I will, I'm prepared to make motion that we, I guess we're not adopting it, but we're introducing ordinance number 16.143 with amendments to municipal code titles 16 and subdivisions and title 17 zoning to clarify requirements for accessory dwelling units, junior accessory dwelling units, urban lot splits, SB nine residential development and ministerial design review.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for bringing that forward. And Ben, thank you for being, I do see a comment from our city attorney.
And then the other thing we would need is direction from the council on the notification for the community development director ministerial hearings consideration.
Yes, so as we discussed tonight, the SB nine hearings, if there is a ministerial approval that doesn't go to planning commission, we would like to see the city just maintain a policy, at least for the time being. So we see how it plays out, that they are notifying as we do. I think it's within how many feet do we do a notification from a property that's?
Typically, it's property owners within 300 feet. But some of these smaller applications, it might be adjacent property owners.
Yeah, so so whatever is is our normal practice right now, just kind of maintaining that. So neighbors are notified. And I think it's just a great educational pattern. So do we have a? Do you need a motion on that or just need direction from council?
I think too, there's a lot of variability there. It might be worth our while to maybe look at it a little more closely and then come back with maybe some feedback. Or if it's really simple, then we can just adopt a policy direction. But Kirsten can.
Would that maybe be more appropriate as a future council agenda item?
So the, I think the thing that we're struggling with is because of all these new state housing laws that have come into effect, there are many things that are now ministerial only. And so the question is, do we want all of those ministerial applications to be noticed? Or are we talking specifically just about ADUs and SB nines or just SB nine? If the council feels comfortable in making that decision tonight on just those two items, that we can do that. Otherwise, we would probably want to bring it back.
Yeah, I think tonight, since we're just talking about these two items, and then I'd look to staff to say, hey, maybe consider, you know, this is another area in the future we may want to consider just taking the same stance. But I, I, I think this is more of a, you know, government operates best in the light versus the darkness. And so if we are, you know, just taking the tact of we want the public to know what's going on within town and if there's an approval happening, this is a great way to notify people. So, but let's just, I think, just stick to this tonight.
How about including some information in the city newsletter? Maybe that, would there be a way to, would that be helpful? Not all the details, but brief.
You mean on specific projects or just the city's limited?
No, just the, I just mean in general, the legislation, the city's just working on, you know, just, just a brief, just so people can, it's one more way of transparency. Not the details for the projects, but just in general that we're working to comply and something of that nature.
We could do that.
And every little bit, I think, helps us try to get the word out.
Confused when it keeps changing, but we'll, we'll keep them informed.
Yeah, high level, I mean, high level.
Legislative updates. Okay, so is that, so you would like a motion on this or is it just?
So the most, we would like a motion if you would like staff to notice the ADU and the SB nine ministerial, ministerial community development director hearings, quote unquote hearings, that we get a motion on them.
All right, that would be the motion then. So do we have someone who wants to make that motion?
Yeah, you're assuming I kept up with that.
Just say, just say, I'll, I'll move that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that, that suggestion from the city attorney. I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes unanimously. And then with that, the next item on our regular agenda. So thank you, Ben, for being here. Appreciate the, the help on this. We need all the help we can get to keep up with the state actions.
Thank you.
Next, we have future council agenda items. Do we have any, anyone? Okay, seen none. Next, before we close, we have to convene the closed session. We have one topic tonight. It's a conference with our legal counsel regarding real property negotiations under Government Code Section 54956.8. The two lots between 201 and 241 Kings Village Road, APN's 220, or 02260105 and 022601. Staff president will be the city manager and city attorney. Are we expecting any sort of report out on that? Seeing no. Okay, but we will be back to close for adjournment. So right now, we'll go ahead and convene the closed session. Thank you. So right now, we'll go ahead and convene the closed session. Thank you. All right, we were back from closed session, and we have nothing to report, so I'll go ahead and.